We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone. One's online. Make sure you're muted. Agenda confirmation. Anything to add?
No.
Motion approved?
Sorry. I was just shutting that up. He saw me do that. I had to drop it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda since Commissioner Nelson's phone got shut off.
Motion by David, second.
I'll second.
Second by David, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a friendly reminder to shut your phones on off.
You're supposed to know that.
I was doing it when you started the thread, a minute early, and I had to drop it.
Minutes of May 7th meeting. Any additions, corrections?
Mr. Chair, I just had one thing I saw. Let me get to it. Oh, under, on page two of four, under land use, it should, it should probably state that there was two docs in that purchase, not just one.
Yeah, I hear that one. And then I had one under EDA on three of four, where when we motioned to, for the 24,706, should, we should probably mention that we had, it was previously approved, or just giving, or approving the remainder. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know how to word that, I guess, but...
Maybe say money previously allocated.
Yeah, previously allocated. That's it.
Anything, Erica?
Nope, I didn't have anything.
Richard. Had none?
Mr. Chair, there was some suggestion, and I will be bringing up the resolution later in my report for the pay scale, that was suggested that we clean up the language in the motion with regards to implementing the new pay structure for non-union employees. So, I just wanted to make note of that.
It's on page four of four. I, I had that. I forgot.
It's you that has paid.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie.
Yes.
Yep.
With that, the motion approved was amended.
Some...
Motion by Barry, second.
I'll second.
Erica?
Further discussion? Hearing them all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes of the May 14 special meeting. Basically, a short...
Motion to approve? I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Special meeting was just to appoint an interim assessor. And that was all, so. Further discussion? Hearing them all, in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Gretchen?
We're waiting for...
Yeah? You waiting for...
We can do the, okay.
Okay.
We can do the consent.
No. Move on to the consent agenda. Are waiting. Anything, question, or something needs to be pulled? There'll be...
Mr. Chair, do you want to make note of the claim that was pulled out?
Yeah, we pulled in finance yesterday and go back to Sheriff's Committee and to, had to do with prepayment before getting the Snowville.
Yeah.
And then you have the sheriff next week, and we got to end June to use those funds and bring it back on the June meeting.
Are you looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's another...
Did you pull, what was that, that was out of claims, then?
Out of claims.
Out of claims, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the purchase of Snowville in claims.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing them all, in favor, say aye.
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 We can move on to open forum if you've got a few minutes, Judge. Okay, okay. Open forum. An open forum, if you signed up, just come up to the table here and state your name and address, and try to limit it to three to five minutes. Rick?
Okay, my name is Rick Michelson, and I happen to be this year serving as the president of the Pelican River Watershed Board of Managers. And as you are all well aware, we've got a couple of, of managers that are up for reappointment this, this year. And I would just like to tell you guys that our, our board right now is going through, we've been, we've been real busy with a lot of things. We have hired new legal counsel, we've hired new attorney, excuse me, a new engineering firm, and we're going through our rules, change, updating our rules. And we've been working on this for several months. For that reason, I would, I would encourage you guys to continue with our two new, our existing two board managers that are, that are up for reappointment, because they're, they're versed on what's been going on. Another thing that's going on is we are beginning a new project up at Campbell Creek, and that's going to be a big project that we're doing. And of course, manager Okerson, Orin Okerson, lives up in, owns property away on, by Campbell Lake and Campbell Creek all the way down. He's instrumental on knowing what's going on there. And the same, excuse me, the same with Charlie Jaskin, who lives very close to the Campbell Creek, and, and they've got a lot of good experience in what's going on up there. And both these guys are good, solid thinkers, and very instrumental in, in good outcomes for our board of managers. So, I would encourage you guys to reappoint both of those gentlemen. My name is Rick Michelson. I live at, down in Lake Sally. And if you want my address, 13125 West Lake Sally Drive. So, any questions of me?
Thanks, Rick.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a Ray Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioners, my name is Ray Higgins. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Minnesota Timber Producers Association. We represent loggers, truckers, sawmills, the forest products industry in our state. Our office is in Duluth, 324 West Superior Street in Duluth. We do have members here in Becker County and throughout the state. In fact, our incoming president is Kelly Kimble, who's a Becker County resident and manages timber here in Becker County. Many of us were together at the State Capitol a month or so ago, back in March, I guess two months ago, so it's good to see you, see you all again. Thank you for your leadership on forestry. It's good to see the Becker County seal with forestry prominently displayed there. Just wanted to stop by and share the importance of the availability of Becker County timber to our members. I know that I'm speaking to the choir here, and I appreciate that. I'm sure Ms. Lundeen, your land commissioner, can give you the exact number of loggers with active permits each year, but loggers in this part of the state rely on the timber here in Becker County. They've made business decisions, they've hired employees, they've borrowed money, they've made investments in their businesses, all with the thought that this timber would be a consistent, steady, reliable supply of timber that they can produce and deliver to mills and make products that we all use in our state. These loggers are an important part to the economy of Becker County. In a, in a 2020 study of the economic contributions of Minnesota agriculture and forestry, I've got a copy of it, if I was smart, I would have brought several copies. I brought one copy, which I can leave with you. But in Becker County, the forest products industry contributes 552 jobs, making $26.8 million in income, those 552 folks working in this county. There's an $80.7 million total input, total output generated, and another $34.9 million in value added. And of course, revenue from timber sales reduce taxes paid by Becker County residents. So, it's all good stuff. We're all putting people to work, we're all, and we're managing the forests. We're keeping the forests healthy in this part of the state. We all make these products, and we manage those forests, and we do it sustainably. We follow the Minnesota Forest Management Guidelines, which allows these forests to be sustainable in Minnesota. We grow three times as much wood in our state as we harvest. Minnesota has gained 2.15 million acres of timberland in the last 45 years. You know, you talk to folks in the Twin Cities, they think the forests up here are going away, and I say, we should drive around northern Minnesota for a little bit and see, does it look like we have fewer trees? Does it look like we have less forest land? In fact, there's an additional 2.15 million acres of forest land, timberland, in the last 45 years. We've got more big trees than we did 45 years ago. That means they're growing bigger. We only harvest 1% in our state of our timberland each year. In fact, 41% more trees die of natural causes. They fall over, or they get blown down, or infestation, or diseased. 41% more trees die of natural causes than we harvest annually. All this means that our forests are sustainably healthy. For all the activities we love in Minnesota, it's why we live in the North Woods, we hike, we camp, we fish, we hunt, we bury, pick, we birdwatch, and so much more, as you know. So, what happened in the last week or so in Becker County and the forests is concerning to us. We encourage the county to have the proper conversations. I understand that those have begun, which is outstanding. I had a conversation with, a couple of conversations with interim Administrator Smith, and we look forward to participating in that and helping you out in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Rick.
Dennis Kroll.
I am here, of course, about the watershed district appointments. My name is Dennis Kroll. I live at 26463 Paradise Point Road, Floyd Lake. I would just like to echo some of the concepts or discussion that Rick had. We are in the midst of attempting, well, we're not going to attempt, we're going to, look at our permitting, look at our rules, and are working with the new firms, as he said, both legal and engineering, to accomplish that. And it is absolutely essential that we keep the continuity of the board as it is. I feel confidently the two managers that are up today for reappointment have that commitment to get this, to get this done and to do it right. I'll speak a little bit about Orin in particular. As was already stated, he farms in a very sensitive area. He has, on his own, and with the SWCD's cooperation, watershed district, et cetera, I believe he may have done 20 or more projects on his land adjacent to Campbell Creek. Campbell Creek is an impaired water. We are required to, for sediment, we are required to deal with that and work on that. His support is essential, and his understanding of that area is essential. Now, among the things that originally was a concept, and still is, I believe, a concept of the watershed district's board of manager, is that there be representation from the various lakes. Detroit, Sally Melissa, I'm on Floyd currently, or not currently, I've been there for 50-some years. So, that, it, it breaks down that way. Long currently does not have an active member. But it's also part of it that there would be representation from the farmers, and that would be Orin. He has a proven record. I consider him the conservative conscience. He looks at costs, and by the way, this rules revision is not cheap and work, and we would need to, if these two gentlemen leave, we would probably need to start reeducating further from the work we've done in the past months. Charlie Jaskin represents, he's, he's on the township board, he knows something about government, and I believe he is firmly committed to the process that we're undertaking. Please, keep these two. The watershed district has one mission, and that is water quality, maintaining it or improving it. And the adherence to that concept of that mission statement should be the most important thing in these appointments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, could you go back to probation? I know they have to go into court.
Yeah, I was just gonna...
Okay, you're good.
We're gonna interrupt, pause public forum here and take care of Judge Tilmoni and Brian Williams' team from probation. The judge has court here at nine o'clock.
Good morning.
I'm sure glad Jody Kulik isn't here. Boy, she's... Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Jody.
Especially in person.
Yeah. We also have Judge Lawson joining us. And Crystal Cadre, our coordinator.
Good morning. Well, good morning, Commissioners, Peggy and Curie. We bring in front of you today our drug, our National Drug Court proclamation. Throughout each May of each year, this is known as the Drug Court Treatment Court Month for everything that we do to recognize all the hard work that judges, our clients, Jody, Crystal, and all of us put into the, into the process for a successful result. So, if I could, if I could just read into the record what this proclamation is and kind of summarize things towards the end. According to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, now known as All Rise, treatment courts are the most successful intervention in our nation's history for leading people with substance use and mental health disorders out of the justice system and into lives of recovery, stability, and health. There are now more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide. Treatment courts are the cornerstone of justice reforms sweeping the nation. They have transformed the way that our justice system responds to people with substance use and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment. Treatment courts annually refer more than 150,000 people to life-saving treatment and recovery support services. We save an average of $6,000 for every individual that we serve. And according to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, now known as All Rise, we significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at less expense than any other justice strategy. Treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, et cetera. They also facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals such as us here today. It also demonstrates that when one person rises, we all rise together. Becker County, of most interest here, Becker County has joined the supportive treatment courts by implementing our drug treatment court back in 2007. We were one of the first adopters across the state, which is also key to our success. Becker County Veterans Court in September 2015, and our DWI Court in 2015. Simply stated, to have all three major types of treatment courts in Becker County is a great accomplishment that should be recognized. These programs simply save lives and are tremendous resource and support for the participants and their families. We hope that Becker County declares May our treatment court month, and recognizing the significant contributions that our team has made over the last 17 years toward reducing substance abuse crime and recidivism while at the same time saving valuable resources. Joining me today is also Judge Tilmoni, as we talked about, Judge Lawson, Jody, our treatment court agent, and Crystal Cadre, our coordinator. So, without anything more from me, I'd like to open the floor to them if we could.
I don't have much to add, other than I'm in support of it, and I'm asking for your support for this proclamation today. I think you all know that I had the drug court and the veterans court, and Judge Lawson is currently doing our DWI court. And she came from a long line of specialty court experience as well, from Clay County, so we have a great team here going, and I think things are going well, and I just request that you support the proclamation.
Anybody online, Judge Lawson, or want to speak, or...
Good morning, certainly. Thanks for accommodating a remote appearance today. I would simply echo what Judge Tilmoni said. Frankly, treatment courts, they save lives and they save money. And we are proud and humbled to have the Becker County Board support our courts, and would ask for you to show that support by adopting the resolution today. Thanks again for your support.
Thanks, Judge. Anyone else online, Jody, or...
Yes, thank you again as well for us appearing via, via remote as well. We are on our way to Anaheim for the All Rise National Conference. We are going to be there for the next five days, Judge, or Jody and myself, and we are excited about this proclamation. Obviously, it's the National Treatment Court Month, so we are really excited to learn more and to bring some of that back to Becker County and Clay County. And I myself will come back to you, what perhaps maybe Judge Lawson or Judge Tilmoni to request for further funding. That might come later this summer. But as of today, I would just be asking for your recommendation of this proclamation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, I just want to thank, thank everyone that's been part of this since 2007. Doesn't seem like it's that long ago. But I want to point out that this, the judges have went above and beyond what their duties are. I mean, if we didn't have willing judges to do these things, we wouldn't have this program. So, a real big shout out to Judge Lawson and Tilmoni for, for doing, continuing doing that. And I can't remember who started, who was the judge that started this? Was it...
Borgan.
Lisa, Judge Lisa Borgan. I thought that's who it was. And another special thanks to Don Kotsman. I mean, he's, he was through many, many programs in many years, so he's not with, with the court system right now with us, but I'm sure he's out there doing, doing above and beyond like he's always been doing. But again, this, this is not something that's required, I believe, if I'm speaking right, Judge, from the judges. They do that because they believe in the program and that, that it helps individuals. So, this is a great shout out to those that are doing this program, because it shows your compassion and your desire for people to be better and, and be successful. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks, too. I went to a drug court not too long ago, and...
Congratulations on that.
Yeah. Well, I was a spectator at drug court.
No, no, not ours.
No, I just, it's amazing, and I actually had a few people that were in, were at the, members at there were former students of mine, and it was nice to see how they've turned their lives around. And it's, it's as a result because of all four of you guys. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, thank you. I, I understand how hard addiction is, and, and those that are struggling with addiction need all the support they can get, and this is one avenue of great support for them to be successful. So, thank you to all those involved.
Just comment, I guess I went to my first drug court graduation, Judge Borgan, and it was quite a moving experience to see somebody get up there, pretty much spill their whole life and their problems, and, and walk through it, and on the, probably the good side, hopefully. And through that, I've been to quite a few of the graduations, they're just updates, and it's very uplifting for a person to go and sit and just listen to these ones that are in the court. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, from all of us, we graciously thank all of the Commissioners and the support from Becker County, our judges and our team. So, with that, thank you all.
With that, I'd make a motion to support Resolution 05242D. I will second.
Motion by Barry, second by David. Further discussion? Not? Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, thank you to all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good trip. Safe trip.
Thank you.
Back to open forum. Birch Burdick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Birch Burdick. I live on the north shore of Melissa, have a home there at 24791 North Melissa Drive. I'm also president of the Melissa Sally Lake Association. I'm here to speak to the topic of your Pelican River Watershed District appointments today. These comments may echo a little bit what have been said by a couple of previous speakers. In my role, have been observing watershed district meetings for many months now. I would acknowledge to you that last fall, there were some moments where it was a little contentious, but I have been very impressed by how the watershed district board actively and very consciously worked to find a constructive and harmonious working relationship amongst themselves. It was fun to watch, not just the process, but the fact that they were successful in achieving that. I'm retired now, but, but spent two and a half decades as counsel for county government over on the North Dakota side, and I'm very aware of how important it is to have a harmonious working relationship amongst board members in order to achieve success at their important business. And as has been said, there's some important business ahead for the watershed district. The two positions that are up, the watershed managers that are currently in there are seeking reappointment, Charlie Jaskin and Orin Okerson. And on behalf of the Lake Sally and Melissa Association, I'd like to encourage you to reappoint those two members to that board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Bond.
Mr. Chairman, I signed that by mistake. I thought it was in attendance.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. That's, that's fine. That's it for the ones that signed up for open forum. I think we're gonna jump ahead for appointments. We got most of the people here for the watershed appointments and any other appointments. Anybody have any other appointments other than watershed?
No.
Okay. Pelican River Watershed appointments. Got two, Jaskin and Okerson are up.
Mr. Chair, I was just curious. I know there was a couple that, that put in some, put in a request. Is there any of those people besides Orin and...
Raymond Redding is here, and Dick Flea was the other one, but I don't see him, I believe. There was four that put in for the two positions.
I don't know if you want to allow any, anyone speaking?
Raymond, you want to speak?
Well, did you, yeah, I suppose I could.
Yeah, you, come on up here and...
Well, good morning, Board. Have you guys received my resume, then? Have y'all reviewed and stuff? Okay. So, thank you so much for that. Yeah. So, I just felt like I'd be a good an attribute, obviously, for the watershed district with my vast background, working for USDA, NRCS. I received several awards within USDA and the federal government. I manage the largest wetland restoration, restoration project in the United States. Worked with the head of agencies, both federal, state, and local agencies, to put a lot of conservation on the ground, including a lot of the conservation reserve programs. We talked about the Campbell Creek Project. Those kind of projects were my biggest niche, riverine systems. I also, I worked with, you can see with numerous watershed districts within the state. I also worked with the steepest watershed in the state, which is the Wild Rice Watershed District, where in 2002, they flooded, and I was in charge of all the ECP programs and all that for flood mitigation and putting conservation programs for buffering, working with farmers. I also farmed, too, so my background in farming relating to the farmers helped me produce the most conservation programs within the state, within NRCS, to put conservation on the ground. I'm currently also a certified professional in erosion and sediment control. I'm a certified stormwater pollution prevention plan designer, and you can see all my backgrounds, my education within that. I feel strongly that I'd be a great attribute to the watershed district to help and grow in the right asset to put conservation on the ground. But I'll let you, as a board, decide that, what is best. Any questions for you?
No, we all received your letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, want to do one at a time? Or motion?
Well, is it, do you go by Ray or Raymond? I just, your, your resume is very good and I, it's very impressive. I would, I, it's unusual that we have such qualified candidates applying for these open positions. I mean, and I think last time we had a, we had an applicant that, that, well, I think we had a new applicant that, that we changed on the board. So, things happen all the time and I, and I, and I think rollover in boards is a natural occurrence. And I, and if this would have been a few months ago, I think we'd all probably been looking at new applicants because I, I think it was brought up. The board wasn't probably as, running as smoothly as it probably should. Same with this board. Now it seems like, you know, it ebbs and flows. We, we get, get better. I would, I would certainly hope that the watershed, I mean, if you don't get your appointment today, would, would bring you in and utilize some of your knowledge on, on their projects, if, if that's the way it goes. I do see the, I think Chad is pretty new on the board. I'd like to see him continue. And Orin's got that leadership for, it's tough for me to, to change board members when they want to be reappointed on things like this, when they have that knowledge. But your resume is just incredible and I, and I, it would be, it would be, it would be sad if we didn't utilize, if, if you were willing, if we couldn't utilize some of your knowledge, at least in other ways, and get you involved and then, then eventually step into the board. But I'm, again, I didn't, you know, last time I, I thought we shouldn't have, shouldn't have changed the board up also. So, I'm supporting the current board members at this time.
So, is there a motion to reappoint?
I will make a motion to reappoint Orin Okerson.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
For the discussion?
I did, I did just want to say that we received a lot of communication over the last week regarding this. And I think I only had one, one, maybe two people that I communicated with that did not want the current board to, to continue. So, I think there, there's definitely a lot of, which we've seen this morning, support for that, the, the board to continue so that they can finish the important work that they've started.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor, reappointment, Orin Okerson, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Here. And we have the position of Charlie Jaskin.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry to call you Chad.
Wayne Charles.
I'll make a motion to appoint Charlie.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by David. Other discussion?
The only discussion is, you know, I, I know we like, I mean, us as a board even, nobody likes change. I mean, we don't like change when we, we do it. Your board doesn't like change. It happens, it evolves, we get through it no matter what. So, I don't usually like that as, as a reason to keep people, but I think the, the working relationships you have right now are working well and, and to continue. But that's not just the reason. I mean, otherwise, John and I'd be on this board forever and.
No, not me. Probably you.
No, we'll, we'll see in two weeks, I guess. So, question?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Here. Thank you, Raymond, for putting in. And Dick Lee, I think was the other one that put in. And thank the present members for the work you do.
Yep.
A lot of time is not real gratifying, but it has to be done. So, thank you, so. Any other, calling, any other appointments on committees or stuff? Okay. Sounds good. I think I missed anything so far. Call the administrator.
Oh, you're not trying to open your reports?
Oh, I skipped those.
You did.
Apparently didn't want to do them. Excuse me, committee reports.
I just had a couple this, this time the, we had our EDA meeting last week. We went over our audit. We have our workshop coming up next week. There, I believe Cody said 30 people signed up to attend, so we should have a really good turnout for that workshop. Also had human services, which most of what we talked about is on the agenda. So, I don't think there's anything else.
I had a, I had a couple. I had, first one I had was Lakes Country Service Co-op. Basically, just a normal meeting. They, they did a good proof for a grant to help, for teacher mentoring program for $800,000. So, that's going to be a big part of their process going forward here, in the, in, you know, in the near future. They're hiring some staff with that money and then they're also going to use that money to do the mentor program. One thing I did learn though, which is really interesting, is that the, the social media, because of most of the board members on the Lakes Country Service Co-op Board of Directors are elected officials, they brought this up, the Supreme Court ruled that public officials have protection to block critical comments and users from their personal social medias, provided they do not engage in any, what they called state action, which would be, so for example, if, if, if we don't state anything on there about public, you know, like, let's say Becker County, then if we, if somebody brings that and puts it on there by themselves, then we can block them or remove that post and it, and it's, and it's legal. That's, that would be like our protection. I thought that was kind of interesting, maybe. Or else you don't. Anyway, so, then we also had a Partnership for Health, and they're, they're going to start a new dental, we know that they're going to start a new dental facility, and I, I don't remember the name of the building now, but essentially owns, it's the old County Market Building. And then supposedly, by July 1st, they're going to have the space finalized and then they're going to start moving on that. So, that's a, that's a fun thing to do. And then one of the things that's on the agenda is from human services, then, and the grant money that is for that is coming from the Partnership for Health. And then I had Historical Society, and there's a big issue right now at the Historical Society. There's, actually, there's two, one thing that's going on and there's a big issue. So, when they, they were going to get a Smithsonian exhibit, and they found out, and our executive director got denied the, getting the exhibit because there was, the, the museum is too dry. So, they did some investigating and there was not a humidifier put into the HVAC system, and there was supposed to be. So...
Paid for it?
What? No, I, I don't believe, was it, it wasn't paid for, was it?
They were going to review what the instructions.
Yeah, they were going to review what happened, because...
It's always in discussion, but they want to see if it's accurate.
Yeah. So, and, and, and our executive director, Mitchell, said she would have never agreed to not have that in there because that's an essential part of a museum. So, they, they also have to, the, the one, one avenue that she's going to explore is the DED, which is the Department of Employment and Economic Development, has to sign off on the bonding. So, the gentleman that's in charge of that can, she's thinking can require the builders to install that. So, and she might, she's also said she might have a building, call building meeting to figure out that too. So, that's a big deal though. And then, and then because we aren't getting, be able to get that right away, they are going to have American Adventures exhibit, which is, is modeled after Oregon Trail. I don't know if any of you guys know Oregon Trail.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, that, and, and the nice thing about that exhibit is it'll fit completely in the basement, so it won't, you'll be able to have the rest of the...
Is it green or in color? I remember both.
It's a, it's a big, it's a, actually.
Blocks.
So, it, it'll be used, they believe, we believe it'll be used by little kids and adults too, because adults know what Oregon Trail is.
I don't think I ever made it to Oregon.
I'm pretty sure.
I think I got killed on the trail every time.
So, that's pretty exciting and that may come in this fall, or, or it'll for sure come in, in February. So, that, I think that's about it for the, for the historical society. Fair board we had last night, they are, there's nothing really new. There's just an update on the bleachers. They are, they're going to have the handicap bleachers, but they're not going to be ready until after the fair. So, what they're planning on doing is putting a big slab of cement down. That's going to be where the bleachers are going to be. Then they'll be able to, this big pad will be able to be used for handicap accessible people to get, it'll, they'll make it so it's usable for that. Then it'll be actually really good. It's going to be by the flagpole, if you, any of you know, go in the grandstand area. So, and then the other thing, just a reminder, that they're having a rodeo now at the fair. So, that'll be Wednesday and Thursday will be the rodeo in the, in the grandstands, and then the derbies will still be Fridays and Saturdays. So, that's kind of cool. I believe that's it.
I got pelted with mud last year at the derby. I was in the front row. Safety screens, no.
I had a couple. I couldn't make fair board last night. If he left it in Dave's hands, he could handle it. So, we had the airport. The parking lot and the new fuel system is moving right along. They hope to have it in all operation in July or before. The new key hanger is progressing. The base and so forth is there and it just has to be recompacted before the actual building can start. I hope they have that up by fall, late fall. And I think they're already rented out. Plus, we got an agreement coming up later here on the agenda for the funding on that. Also, Pelican River Watershed District, big thing they're in their third work session with more engineering on rule revision, which is like Rick Michelson, I think they're spending over $50,000 to get this redone. So, it's not real cheap. And the Ford Lake Offlet, reported on that before, where that old concrete structure dam is coming out of there and it'll make it more usable for fish passage with rock, weirs and dams. That'll start here later in June after all the fish spawning is completed. So, that project's moving forward. That's about all I have.
That EDA with Erica, she covered that, but we did have a meeting about this logging issue.
I wrote it down, yeah.
And we have the logger here. I don't know when we want to talk about it, but we really need to talk about it.
I'm going to talk.
You're going to bring it up?
I will.
Okay.
That was my intent.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I had Lake Agc Regional Library, couple things. The Morehead, the new Morehead, I don't know what they call it, the event center or the library and community area there is, is moving forward. We are moving, the Laurel, we anticipate moving forward into the, and having our office space with the Morehead Library. We authorized up to $250,000 for furnishing for, so all new furnishings for the Laurel part of it. Contingent on, we have a lease agreement signed with, with the City of Morehead, because they will own the building. And I found it prudent to have that lease agreement done before you purchase furniture. So, and if you know our relationship with City of Morehead, we are in the basement of their current library. So, it's not a, it's not a wonderful space because you're all in the basement, but it has been very, very reasonably priced. The price they, you know, basically, some, you know, given that, very, it's very cheap anyway. But with the new facility, want to make sure that it's a reasonable price, not, not, I'm sure it's going to go up in price, but I'm just a little concerned that we, you don't want to be paying a premium either. You know, we have the, there's some statute that says we might have to be with a library, but anyway, that's, it was a little concerning to me. We just don't want to. And I'm sure the City of Morehead will do a great partnership again. So, but we did make that motion to make sure we have that signed. Had the, there's a small increase in the request for the signatories this year. It's, it's very small. I think, if I remember right, it's, it's, I think it was a 2%. Similar to Lakeland Mental Health, which we just had yesterday, we'll be asking for a approximate, they're asking 2% increase for signatories. And for Becker County, that will equate to about a $5,000 increase for next year on a, so I think it was just, just at about 2%. The, the Lake Agc Regional Health is doing well. This year, they're pretty much a break even month, but for the year, they're about a 7% margin, so pos, in the positive. And there's, they're, you know, this, the Morehead, Morehead again is getting a new office up there and they're completing the first stage, which they were building new. Now they're moving everyone over to the new and they're doing a remodel in the old part. So, that's coming along well. And I think those are the only two meetings I had this last week.
Really quick.
Anything else?
Extension.
That? Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item that I just wanted to bring to your attention of work in progress, I brought it before the department head meeting, asked a lot of questions about when we get data requests, when different departments are managing that as well as administration. And what I found out is there wasn't really a consistent method between departments or how they're tracking and how they're going about that. So, this, I did do a demo with the Civic, the, the company that does our Civic Plus software. They do specific software for tracking of data requests and, and you're able to edit it and all of that right within. Judy Elsa was on the second call with me and asked a lot of the IT questions that she had. And then she also suggested that we, you know, also compare, you know, other softwares as, as well. So, that is a kind of a work, that's a work in progress to see. And it appears again, in speaking to the department heads, that that'll be a need down the road that I'll be bringing back.
That should probably be going through committee.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to let you know that that'll be coming up through committee and then through finance. I, I asked for, it appears that we're doing things a bit inconsistent when there's purchases that are, are budgeted through departments. So, I just was wanting to know board direction of how you'd like that handled, when purchases are higher than the $5,000 threshold. It does come through claims. If it's a budgeted item, I think we're doing it differently, whether it's budgeted and whether or not it just is signed for and then reviewed through finance and through the claims, or if you'd like that presented at board. Again, I think we're doing it differently depending on department. So, I was just looking for some feedback.
Want to look at it, finance and come up with a policy, kind of a general?
You want me, okay.
Policy for us to...
We haven't discussed it too much.
No, we haven't, not much.
Yeah, it's come up through a few committees and then, I know in our human service committee, I think it came up again. And then I was saying one thing, you were saying another.
Yeah, it was brought up regarding the latent broadcasting. It was, that, that was grant, money that was paying for it. That was approved and they didn't know if they should bring it forward. And we said to bring it forward because...
Right. And I think it's good for the board to hear the information.
That's just what I was going to say. You, you, we want to be, we want to know what's going on, even though if we're, I mean, so at least put it in there that we are, have a grant, grant acceptance of this and so.
Mr. Chair, can I ask some comments about that particular one? We would always bring any purchase over $5,000 to the board for approval. This particular one, however, was questionable because we had already approved through the opioid settlement and those, our misappropriation was as a part of that and was included in that. So, that was the only reason for the...
Yeah, I saw that, the, the statement said opioided. It just said opioided.
Do we need to approve again until that part of the committee came from there? We would always bring anything approved out.
And I think, I think maybe each department can look at it, because in highway, we did have a policy, because highway's so, I mean, you're on the job site and you're doing construction. You, there's some big decisions that need to be made sometimes. And so, I think we have a policy in highway specific for those type of events.
Change orders and unforeseen things that pop up.
Well, maybe, maybe finance can give some recommendations. Maybe each department look at it a little differently, or one overall policy and department specific.
Okay.
Yep, okay. And that sounds good. And then to piggyback with what Denise had indicated as well, some questions have come up when there's been, when it's come before the board to apply for grants and then when the grant money is accepted. I think, again, it's been inconsistent about bringing it back with a resolution to accept the money, or if we want to look at, again, just looking for direction of how you'd like that handled. It seems like a, I think what I'm hearing from some of the department heads is it's, it's several steps in order to accept the money as well. Just looking for what the board's wishes are.
I think it's nice on the grants to bring them back so we know they're, we receive them.
Yeah.
Is that something that you would consider perhaps in the consent agenda that we, that it's been awarded, or do you want them to present that?
Again, I think finance can come up with policy, but if we, if we make a, if we usually, depends on the grant, if, if we want to make, make, we want to approve the grant application and accept, and then if you just put it in the, in consent agenda, know that we were awarded that, that would be appropriate in most cases. In some cases, we're not sure, you know, like I think in the past, environmentals applied for huge grants, which would require us huge expansions. Now, those might be require, we might want to see come back and decide if we're going to accept that grant, because we have to determine how much money is going to be required from us and what... because we have to determine how much money is going to be required from us and what expansion we're, so, you know, you can't just say a five thousand dollar grant for advertising versus a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for expansion of the MRF and, and would, would require us a million dollar input. You know, there's, there's certain significant differences.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree.
There's a lot of the grants we've got, there's no cost share in.
Right.
That's one thing, but a lot of the other ones are ten, twenty percent match, so.
Yep, and a, and a lifetime commitment to a project.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, the next item that I had, um, was with regards to the airport, which John already, Commissioner Okuson already spoke about. And I would ask for, unless there's discussion or questions, um, would recommend a motion for approval of the resolution, oh five twenty four two F.
So I have a motion to approve two F and it just, the city and the county are just backing the bond. And hangar rentals should more than, yeah, pay for their.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna ask John. I mean, how many, I would like to have seen a analysis of how this is going to be paid for from the rentals. I mean, what is the rental rate per month and how much annually that?
It's not only these new rentals here, it's but what they make from all the rentals, hangar rents.
So you're saying that, that this, at cost averaging, you're gonna, the rental from all the hangars will make this and there's no payments on anything else, basically?
No, there might be one left on that.
There's, there's, yeah, there was one small one, but the, what I, what I read was that the current hangar rents, rentals, not including the new one, are, will pay for the, the payment for the new one, yeah. So then the other, the, the rentals for the new hangar would be above that.
We raised the rental rates here, I think, a year ago.
Did you get, did Jerry rent out there?
He's, he's, he's got a jet.
A Model T jet?
Call for a motion on two F.
I'll, I'll move on two F.
One second. For the discussion, hearing on all the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close, carry.
All right, um, the next item is the resolution oh five twenty four two K. This is in regards to adopting the ten step scale on the new pay grid. Um, it came to my intention that we had had much discussion apparently about this, but there had been no formal action on accepting of that scale, so I would ask that, I recommend that a, an approval for moving forward with the ten step scale.
And does this ten step scale, um, include the recommendations made by, um, DDA? For when we had the, there were some appeals?
Are you talking about the appeals?
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we already approved that.
Those appeals, yeah, we just didn't approve the ten step scale.
We just didn't approve the new scale officially, yeah.
Motion two K?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution two K.
One second.
Second. Still trying to find it.
Second, Dave?
Page eighty one.
All the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, carry.
Then, then just one more, one more thing here, the, where the bullet point number three is what Kerry and I had discussed about putting into the last
Into the minutes.
Minutes for that portion, yeah.
So it's consistent.
So it's consistent.
Yes.
Okay, Kerry.
And then, um, my last item and then I'm going to go back to my report. Um, I'd like to introduce our interim assessor. Um, Nancy Gunderson. She's been with us just shy of a week. And then she's going to talk about some recommendations for abatements as well.
Good morning.
Morning.
May chair and board. Um, I'm Nancy Gunderson. I did start here as your interim county assessor last Wednesday. I retired the first of the year from Clay County and I had served there as their county assessor for over eleven years. Prior to that, I also was the City of Morehead assessor. Um, as far as the office, things that we are currently working on, we did get our PRISM file submitted and certified last Friday. Now, we're working on trying to get caught up on some things that had been kind of, um, just been stacking up, so homesteads, sales, transfers, and, um, trying to get those kinds of things. Also doing some more cleanup as to pay twenty four tax statements with abatements. So we're looking at some, um, spreadsheets and things like that to help us find those kinds of concerns and we'll try and bring those to the board as soon as we're able to, to verify those out. Um, and our appraisers now will be going out, I believe, starting probably tomorrow, uh, to do their county work that they have been assigned for this upcoming twenty five assessment. I guess as of right now, um, we've been just kind of working really hard to try to get things cleaned up and get things back on the road. And I don't have any recommendations or anything at this time. And if there was abatements, I know that are being brought today, um, to go forward, so hopefully those will be all taken care of.
Well, thank you, Nancy, and welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much for agreeing to be our interim assessor, too.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anything else? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
So, um, Mr. Chair, if I could go back to the report and I would just like to update the, uh, the board on our meeting from Friday that we had with, uh, state officials and, uh, SHIPPO officials and some tribal officials with regards to.
It's a tough one, Nancy. There you go.
Um, we recently had some issues with our, our loggers and some protests from tribal officials. And we did request a meeting, uh, with, with the state officials and Commissioner Bearburg and Commissioner Jefferson were also present. And really what we, what I was looking for was some, uh, getting some questions answered about process and how to move forward and what the issues truly were. And quite honestly, I don't know that we really got any of our questions answered. So, moving forward, um, I asked both Mitch and Steve to put together, you know, how many open permits we have and what we can expect in the future. Um, we are waiting on a response. We did receive a letter from, from SHIPPO with regards to concerns that, uh, a report had, they had received a report or complaint with regards to, uh, logging in Becker County with regards to the particular area by Strawberry Lake area and cultural resources. So we really were looking for definitions, you know, who determine the cultural resources, what, what are they? How can we rectify the situation? And, um, again, we just really, what I gleaned from the, and, yeah, please feel free to chime in here, but really what I gleaned from the conversation was um, the statutes that they were citing really talked about it's required for sharing of information when you're going to begin a logging operation, but no real clear defined process um, as far as who decides what and when. And it sounds like they can make recommendations, recommendations for future archaeological studies. Um, and that's part of the discussion that we had on Friday. And then, um, but again, I, I don't know that it was real productive. Um, so I'm not real clear on, um, where Becker County will go from here.
And it, and it seems like it's not common practice throughout the state. They had only had ten, ten counties, um, throughout the whole state in the last ten years that have submitted plans or whatever it is that, that the issue is. So it's, it's really confusing. They didn't, they couldn't, you know, like, point to a specific process or definition or just according to their interpretation of the statute. Um, this is what we need to do for all seventy thousand acres of timber sales that we have.
So we got a couple of issues here. One is, can they legally stop him? We don't know that yet. And, and two is, if we put him back to work, how are we going to protect his equipment? And both, we need to move on both of them because this can't go on. And so I, I think that we, I, I don't know if we find an attorney that specializes in this. I don't have a problem doing that and finding out because this is a big deal. And then, how are we going to protect him when he does go back to work?
Um, if I may, I, I just wanted to cite some of the, uh, information that I received from Mitch as well. So active, uh, logging currently, there's three. And inactive sales, which haven't actually begun the logging, is forty two. And so, um, some that they're waiting for just to retrieve the wood out of those sites is six. So we've got several that are going to be coming in the very near future.
Sheriff Gladie, you have a comment on?
You've come in.
Well, I, I was there and, uh, you know, that day we, uh, I think that was quarter of the day we gave the peaceful resolution, which we did. It, it was, it was a peaceful resolution, but it does not, we don't, again, like Richard, Commissioner Barber, we said, where do we go from here? Where do we come from here? And, um, I think there's a lot of unknowns as to what's going to happen the next time and, um, there were people there that were willing to go to jail. So, I guess, again, a lot of unknowns and, uh, you know, we were there. So, so people disperse, so.
One other thing I would add to, when we had our meeting on Friday, I did, um, invite representatives from, from the tribe, from White Earth, um, because we were talking about their concerns. So I, I think really what I heard from that conversation was that they feel that, or they demand, probably is a better word, they demand that they know when we're going to be doing these logging operations and have input into that. And they, they are citing that they believe that that is, um, is the, how things should be and that that's the legal way. But again, I, I don't know that that was ever clarified. It wasn't ever clarified for me during that meeting. And SHIPPO really only, the state, uh, admin, through the administration, administration office through the state really is only getting involved when they receive a complaint. They're not going out and, you know, seeking out some of these projects. But they're indicating, now that, I would imagine, now that they've received the complaint, then they're involved. But they are making recommendations back about future studies or scientific studies and we can't really, we don't understand the definition of that or who's supposed to be doing those, who's equipped to do that, um.
Mr. Chair, does, does SHIPPO have the authority to stop any of this? I mean, this is, this is not using government monies. This is not using state and federal grant money, so I don't think they have any, I don't know that they have any jurisdiction over this. They might have a, I mean, and I think if there's a, if there's a, a site, and we've said this all along, if there's a site or something that's critical, we certainly will work with the tribe and protect and, and look at that. Um, but we can't just say, there might be something out in the woods somewhere.
That's really what we were hearing.
That's not, that's not reasonable. It's not a reasonable request. And if there is something reasonable, that the tribal council should come to us and say, hey, we have this concern in this area. Can we do some homework on it and research before we go to this? That would be more than reasonable, but to, to go out in the woods and terrorize a logger is not acceptable. And we need to, we need to stand up for that, that logging industry and I think we, we support the logger and, I mean, unfortunately, we can't, if you have stolen or damaged equipment, I don't know what we can do for resources there. I don't know that we can. But we certainly will offer, when you're out in the woods, certainly if there's an issue, we will, law enforcement will be there. And, and in my opinion, it was a grandstanding event that was made in a, that made not in, in an attempt to be cooperative, but to be in an attempt to be antagonistic and just grandstanding this. This was, it was, it just shows that things will not be the same if this land is given over. This is not, things is be the same and as normal. This is a, um, this is a planned, planned attack that I think was, was inexcusable. I mean, if you want to truly work together, this is not how you come to the county and say, hey, we have a concern in this area, let's, let's do it. The council member was here at our NRM meeting, not, what, three weeks prior, two, three weeks prior, never said a word of concern about any of them. And our, our cuts are all public. Everything is public knowledge. It's not the, we're, we do this hidden. This is a public sale. It's a public. So, cutting out one percent of our, of our forest annually is not something that, that we should, I mean, we need to manage forests and, and generate income for, for the county residents, so. I don't know what step we do, but I don't think SHIPPO has any rights to, I mean, they certainly can come and say, hey, we have, you know, there was a concern in this area. Is this legitimate? But you can't, you can't have the tribe come and say, we don't know where, but we want, we think there's something somewhere. It's like, that's not acceptable. You know, if, we will certainly accommodate if there's concerns and we'll look at historical sites, but we can't just blindly look at seventy thousand acres that we manage and say, you know, I mean, that would just, it's just not reasonable. So, that's my opinion.
Well, and we don't have a clear, uh, we had state, we had all kinds of people there, you know, representatives and senators, and we did not get a clear answer what we have to do. And I think that's the first thing to do is find out what we have to do and then
Do it.
we have to protect his equipment. We have to. We can't have what went on, on line three where they cut wiring harnesses and destroyed stuff. And if people want to go to jail, then they need to go to jail because somebody's got us, somebody's got to stop this. And we, we, we need to, we need to get moving on it. We, they're gonna, this guy's got payments to make.
I was going to also say, um, with, with the representatives and the senators that were also present, they also, and I pushed that out to the board, you know, wrote the letter on Becker County's behalf, asking more, many more questions, similar questions that we were trying to get answered on Friday. And once, we're still waiting on a response from, from SHIPPO with regards to that letter and their questions. So that was referenced on the Friday meeting. I don't know that we ever got a timeline of when we'll get a response.
Yeah, well, that could be a while.
We also in, in our NRM committee asked for the, the comprehensive plan and they didn't provide it to us. We asked for it, didn't, didn't provide it, didn't bring it and have not received it. So, they, you know, there's a lot of information that they say they have, but they, they don't, they don't bring it to us. They don't say, you know, here's, here's our concern areas, here's our growth areas, here's our timber areas. We don't, so, communication and that has to go both ways. We, they can't just say, we want all your information and not, and, but not, and not share anything.
I've had a lot of conversations and calls over this issue and the end result is, people are saying, when's it going to stop? You know, we got loggers that are trying to make a living and you heard all the economic benefits for everybody in the colony, including the tribal members. And I have the same concerns as Richard, you know, what about the equipment? I know I had a nephew's son that was security for, um, Gordon Construction on line three and I saw, it, it's, it's warranted out there, so.
Yeah.
But.
I, uh, Mr. Chair, I think you have individuals out in the audience, so I'd like to, and I think Mr. Higgins also was asking.
Mr. Brad, you got a comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
What, uh, Todd, the people out there, were they from the, uh, buying the land back group or were they actually the authorized by the tribe?
I guess, I can't answer that. Uh, there, there were tribal council members, there, there were other, uh, you know, people involved in the protest, you know, were there representing tribal land.
You know, this, this, uh, business is really not new. I remember probably about thirty five years ago, I was walking with my family through a logging trail. My wife and two boys were walking down there and more, more or less, we were just out exercising. We, we were just more or less looking at leaves. We're walking through this logging trail and all of a sudden, here's some logging equipment and, and, uh, lo and behold, here comes some guys and these guys are the owners of the logging equipment and they kind of, rah, 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 what are you doing around here? Uh, walking around here. And they, they could see finally, duh, these guys are not guys. But they'd had an issue back then when, when, uh, equipment had been damaged. And I really sympathize with the loggers. Gee whiz, you go out there with a, I don't know how much these, this machinery costs, but gosh, you sure don't need to tore up by some dimwit.
Thanks for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Mr. Higgins is also asking.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
I, I just wanted you to talk about the, uh, cultural.
I just wanted you to talk about the cultural resources and why are these issues standing when those concerns are under standing. And in fact, the guidelines I referenced earlier, the Minnesota Site Level Forest Management Guidelines, do mention cultural resources as being considered in some of these sales. The number that ten agencies or ten counties address this makes sense to me. There's only like twelve counties in the state that have timber programs, like, you know, Hammond County, Ramsey County that do not. It's, it's our counties up here. Many of them do do it because they are, they have certified forests through the Sustainable Forestry Initiative or the Forest Stewardship Council, that requires that question to be, that, that box to be checked off, that they consider that. So some of the other county land commissioners, that I know Mr. Lundin knows and talks with all the time, deal with this on a regular basis. The state, the DNR, had a gentleman, I should say, has a gentleman currently assigned to them to take care of their forestry issues, because they consider this too. He's brand new in that position. The previous guy, I haven't talked to the new guy yet. The previous guy, I remember talking to him, and he said typically on forestry, think about it, when you're worried about cultural resources, burial grounds, et cetera, you're talking about digging. We don't do a lot of digging. We usually go up. We sever the trees above the ground. And so it's typically not a problem. It's not saying we've never pushed some dirt around to build a road and all that stuff. But the lion's share of a forty acre site or sixty acre site that we deal with is, we go up. So it's, it's generally not, once they kind of get into the details of it, it's generally not a concern. I'm not an expert on it, so I don't want you to, you know, don't want to sell this to you as, it shouldn't be a problem from that standpoint. Not saying that the questions are, are, are not understandable. The other thing I will tell you is, the Minnesota Forest Resources Council is a governor-appointed council that deals with issues like this. They're meeting today in Park Rapids. It's actually why I'm in the neighborhood. I came for that meeting, and you all were going to be here, so I came over to be with you for a little bit. But they're addressing this issue, because this is coming up, not in the same way it did in Becker County, but in other counties where consultation has been requested. And there's no, as was pointed out, there's no statutory requirement for it. Becker County owns the land. They have every right to do it. They're, they legally sold the tract of, you know, the tract of timber. Mr. Hodgson's company legally bought it. It, it shouldn't be a problem. But there are folks who, irrespective of the tribal government, may deal otherwise. And I think your concerns about the equipment are valid. Your loggers don't work twenty-four seven. They typically don't move the equipment in and out of the site when they're not there because it's a great expense. So there is some vulnerability there. So I appreciate Commissioner Barber's concern about that. So anyway, just wanted to share those thoughts with you, and appreciate the attention to the issue.
Thank you.
I again want to stress, though, that, you know, if there's things that, ways that we can improve and, and train people to look at, for, for what we can look at would be, but to, to go out on site and, and do what was done is not an acceptable way to change. I mean, it's, it's just.
They've had every opportunity to look this tax forfeited land over. If they, if they, they told us how they find sites near maple trees and water, and that could, there, there could be something there. And that's not hard to find. And if they, and I told them, if this is really your concern, why aren't you out there looking? If they're really looking for this stuff. But I, I feel like you, Barry, I think it's poking the eye, and that's what it is. And we can't have it. This guy's got to go to work. Our industry, it's a big part of our state. And we, somehow, we need to come to something today so that we can get something moving here for this guy and, and the ones coming. And I would, I would, I don't know if we can find an attorney that specializes in this and get an opinion or.
I don't, I don't know that we need an attorney.
Okay, well.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that word, I mean, we have the right, and we've done everything properly. And, and Shippa has a concern because of a complaint, and I don't think it's warranted. If there's something that's shown that's warranted, we would look at it. If, if the tribe, the triple wants to go and look and say, you know, come some, and comes to us, not grandstanding, comes to us and says, here, this is why we think this is a concern. Can we work with it? Absolutely. I mean, we certainly can work, if there's this legitimate concern and it can be shown, I don't, I think we can work. But it needs to come to the, the county, not.
Some facts behind what they're saying.
Yeah.
Not just somebody who doesn't like it.
Yeah. Not, I mean, doesn't want to cut a maple tree down.
Well, what are we going to do about protecting their equipment?
Well, I think if there's an instance, I think the sheriff, you get, take, make the call, and, and the sheriff will provide what we have to do. I mean, if there's a, unfortunately, it's going to fall in the hands of law enforcement.
Is there anything preventive we can do, Sheriff, ahead of time?
Well, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and, and right now, if there's an issue, we can respond, take care of that issue. But to, for us to stay out there continuously is a concern of mine because of the rest of the community's needs. And my staff, I don't have enough on staff right now to be out there twenty-four seven, or after the after hours.
Just a question, Sheriff Glaner, is there, is there, is the tribal police, are they, would they respond and help, help in this case? Are they, I mean, is that, I mean, if there's clear breaking of the law, would the tribal police enforce that law on?
I, I would expect that, but I cannot answer for, for that.
Is there a way to monitor without having somebody there, the equipment, when, when it's not being used? Is there, is there?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Camera that tells me if somebody's outside my door when I'm halfway across the country, but I, I need internet, and I don't.
Yeah, that's what that, that's, that's what I was saying.
You have satellite.
You know, but that would be nice, if he could, if he could monitor his own equipment at least. But I don't know if we could gate the road going in, sign it and gate it, and if somebody does go through there, put them in jail.
Well, I don't know, just because someone's on tax for land, we're not going to put someone in jail because of that, because this is of the grounds.
Yeah. Uh huh. It's just that once they cut that wiring harness, the expense is huge. And Barry, you know, you got tractors, you can't, you can imagine what it takes to replace that.
Yeah.
Or whatever it is. And that's, that's what I'm concerned with, is this guy's got to go to, we have to, we have to move on from here somehow, and, and try and minimize the amount of damage done. And I, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Well, I don't know how we can, I mean, I think what you're talking, if protesters, that would be extreme, and that's, that's felony behavior. I mean, and that would put people in jail for a long time.
And I don't think they did it on line three, and if they did, they wouldn't be back. And that's, that's what I, did they put them in jail for a long time, Sheriff, for what they did to that equipment up there?
For a long time.
The, the trouble is finding out who, proving it. But I mean, we're, we're putting a little bit more, I know it's a concern of the individual, but I don't know, to some of those extents, what, what the county can, can protect. I mean, that, we're at, I, you know, one of the things is maybe offer more flexibility on when you, when you, the length of the contract, so you get more times out there. And, I mean, more length of time to, to make the cut, and it'd be harder to.
I think it's a pretty competitive business the way it is, and I'm afraid that any extra cost is going to really be a problem for these guys.
Well, and I think, just to note, too, I, you know, with this particular cut, you know, there was also some safety concerns. You know, they're running equipment, and they have people close to equipment, and concerns that somebody's going to become injured. So we've had some internal discussions about that as well, you know, whether or not we'd be within, are the DNR and/or Mitch, land commissioner, would be in their rights to, excuse me, to put, you know, some kind of barrier around where they're actually logging for the safety concerns, close to the public during the time of logging. So that's a process that's being looked at as well.
And that's why I wonder if we can't do that, Barry. My job site, I can't have people wandering around.
Right, I was just thinking the same thing. But do we, we'd probably have to make an ordinance specific to that, to keep a, a certain distance away from machinery as you're logging on public grounds?
I think that's a possibility. And I know, as I, and again, I believe it was Hubbard County, other counties have, again, set the parameter, because again, like you said, you're dealing with public land. You can't really necessarily restrict people off of, and I think that's the sheriff's concern as well. They're not necessarily trespassing on public land. But if they're interfering with the operations, that's a different scenario. And then on top of that, as I understood this last incident, that there was, again, some safety concerns.
We, we were prepared to arrest for trespassing if, if the logger continued his operations and refused to leave that site because of safety reasons. That was what we were, that was what we were planning to do, is arrest for trespass. Once Mr. Hodgson decided to vacate that day, obviously, that's when everybody else was, that was, that was the plan. And I, I have mentioned the, the word ordinance, or coming ordinance for those situations. So I'm not sure if that's something that we're going to propose or not.
If we do, if we do do that, I think we also need to make it when, when they're not actually physically logging, but when the equipment is sitting there, we have to have that umbrella around where the logging's happening, where you can't, you can't, I mean, that's got to be the site. And, and as, as long as the logging equipment is there, I think we have to, you know, post it, you can't be in there, period. Because otherwise, they could come in there off hours and do something to the equipment. You know, at least if they know they can't go in there, that, then they know, they know. And I, it may not deter, but it'll give us some reason to.
We can remove them.
Remove them from there. Yes, correct.
Well, I don't know if there's any solid answer we can give today, other than what you've heard, that's not a lot, probably comforting, and.
Well, what are we going to tell them? Can you go back to work?
As, as far as Becker County concerned, I don't, we are not telling you, you can't, we're not saying we can't go back to work on that site. That is a active site, as far as we're concerned, at this time.
And he has an active contract.
Yeah.
And if there's an incident, we, our sheriff's department will respond.
Absolutely.
Yep.
If there's an incident, and then we call, we are going to respond. The issue is, what happens if this continues for, for days?
Is our intention to bring forward an ordinance at our next meeting?
That's been talked about, but then there's a process for ordinances as well.
Yes.
So it, time, time is not on our side with that.
But at least we could get it started.
Yeah. So we've talked about some short-term solutions and long, that would probably be a longer-term solution.
Any thoughts? Any, any, have you ran across other scenarios where anything that we could do to strengthen the logger's protection?
Thank you for the question. This doesn't happen a lot. It's happened a couple of times interstate, it happened a couple of times surrounding round, line three. They were isolated, so it wasn't a concern of the ongoing problem. But in, in some of those cases, the logger backed off. So I don't recall the, you know, the long-term deal, why it ended. But there were, I can cite a couple of cases in which there was damage to a permit overnight. But as far as a situation like this, where there wasn't associated with my plan, I don't recall anything like that. It's not for long. You know, I think back in the seventies, there might be stuff that honestly, I believe of, a little too young to remember. But I think you're on the right track in terms of having these discussions. I think we appreciate the conversation you're having, the concerns you're showing. You're on the right track. Ordinances are, are good. They do take a while to craft properly so that you don't have any kind of consequences. You probably have to be, you know, logging and dealing with the equipment specifically. Just someone riding, and I don't know your county as well as I know Lexington, which is the county where I live, but if a snowmobile was riding through, we have that, where there's snowmobile, snowmobilers come up on the weekend, and they go through a, a logging site, use the same trails, and it's, hey, how you doing? You wave, and that's it. We wouldn't want that sort of activity, or an ATV to come drive by and all of a sudden, they're breaking the law, just driving by, minding their own business. But folks last week weren't minding their own business.
Great.
Climbing on wood, they were yelling, screaming. It was insane.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would like, like to reach out to the tribe, and, and Carrie, maybe you could just send an email or, and try to get a response. If there's, if they send their, is it tip, tipper, their representative, please say, if there's something that's seriously, if there's a burial, burial ground or something relevant, let, I mean, we will certainly work with the tribe on this and work with the logger to try to alleviate any of these future problems. But if, I mean, but they.
Yeah.
Get out on site and tell us and show us.
And I think on this particular site, where the, the tipper, from the tribe, Jamie is her name, had, was part of reaching out to Shippa, because again, they're citing the cultural resources, so when we're asking, what are they? What we're hearing is, you know, the, the maple trees, and that there might have been possibly, was it a sugar camp? I think is what we heard on the call.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And mushroom foraging.
Yeah.
But we were also told that they've been treated badly, and they've had enough of it. That's what he told us. So it's, if there, there isn't any reason why they shouldn't be out looking for these already. This should have been looked for a long time ago. And if they're really interested, they should get out there and start looking. It's tax forfeited land. They can look anytime they want. But they're, they're clearly just trying to stop this, and that, that's the problem I have with it.
But when we ask the question specific, if there is any knowledge about any specific, I, you know, when they reference the, the sugar camps, I think is what's the right word, there might be, but there had been no studies. So we're, yeah.
Well, again, besides the, besides the road and the clearing spot, we're not, we're not harming any dirt, you know, we're not, the logger's not going in any, we're all above ground. So it's not like we're ruining anything if, if we, if, I mean, you want to, want to check the road and the, and the loading area, but this isn't.
It seems to me the main concern was the maples that were being cut down.
For the landing.
For the landing.
And again, if there's a, you know, if there's significant cultural reasons why we should move a landing, or it should be a specific area, I mean, those are things that we can work around beforehand and, and get, and address those beforehand. It's, it's tough to do it when it's, when it's already in progress and done, so.
I don't have anything else.
So I'm trying to re, reach out to tipple.
Well, I would just send an email and ask him, if you have something specific, we will, we will address it. But please, please bring things to the, to the board, you know, or through Mitch and Steve. Going on site and, and that's not a good way to, to be in a good relationship with another government agency.
And maybe Mitch or Steve could go out there with them and.
Right.
Lock the property, see where.
Well, and, and look for future training, and say, you know, these are, these are the things that we would like to avoid. But, I mean, we had a council person here, and they never mentioned anything about it. And Richard and I were in NRM, they never, never said a word about any concerns.
And I think how this started was the tipple worker had reached out to Mitch and left a voicemail saying they were concerned about the maple trees. But it had, it was well after the operation had started.
Yes, and those, these, those look, should be looking at it prior to it being offered for public sale, is what it should be.
Yep. So, so do we, do we agree that we should look at an ordinance in the future?
I think we should.
But what can we do in the short term to, besides contact them? Is there anything we can do? Is there any?
We don't want him to give up.
No, no, that's what I mean.
That's the last thing we want.
Yes. Correct.
Well, and I think, too, from the meeting, it really, again, defining what's required and what's recommended. But I, what I heard pretty clearly was about the collaboration and the communication with the tribe. The tribe is saying they want to know when these logging operations. So again, what I was hearing is that they want, I know it's public information, but should we be doing something else in addition, notifying tribes of the tracks that are going to be logged?
Well, we've done that, and Willis is sitting here, and we've done that for years. Anyone that wants information just asks to be on a list, and it's forwarded prior to. And, and back in the day, Willis, the group looked at lots of sites and, and gave advice. And I think if they want, they, if they want to give input, that's, that's where you do it, in the front end, where you're, where you're looking at different sites. And that's happened since. since, since we've started. There'd just be a different group looking at it this time, basically. So I think it's not unreasonable to, for our land commissioner to have, get input at the front end of, of cuts.
Okay.
Just send out information to them. This is what we're working on.
These are the, and I think we had, I mean, we have multiple years in advance looking at that. So I'm-
I think, I think the land commissioner does that now. I'm not sure. I mean, he's not obviously surveying the 5.5 million members and citizens in the state of Minnesota or whatever, but I think he is getting input from various places. One of the things that, you know, the guidelines I've referenced a couple of times were developed 30 years ago with all sorts of stakeholders involved. You know, we didn't develop them. The legislature didn't develop them. It was all, you know, conservation groups, environmentalists. Isaac Waltman Lee was heavily involved, et cetera, et cetera. So tribal, there's tribal input, there's a tribal representative of Minnesota Forest Resources Council. So the, the idea behind the guidelines, developing them, was to kind of bring everyone together and establish this process. And it's worked very well for the last 30 years or, I think they were developed in 1995. So that process kind of is in place. The guidelines are also used by land managers like Mr. Lundeen and the Becker County Land Department. So just, you know, be aware that these sorts of things are happening. And I think in this case, if I'm not mistaken, even if you had checked with tribal government on this, you might have still had folks out there who were involved, trying to make sure things.
Okay. I think we have to move on and we can work on some type of ordinance for the future here.
That's all I have. Thank you.
We had abatements under-
We had it under me. Do you have a list?
It's on, it's in the package.
Yes.
Eighty-two.
Thank you.
Is it page, yeah, eighty-two.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the abatements for the amount of $4,868.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica. Second by Erica. Further discussion on abatements? Not? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both?
That was as in the schedule. So that's the, there's some pluses and minuses on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I am done now.
Mary, how did your treasurer's report?
Mary, I had this sent to me. They want the main one.
Oh, okay. Good morning, commissioners. I have four resolutions for your consideration today. The first is Resolution 524-2A. We rec, we received a request in April to establish a temporary absentee location using the White Earth Fire Hall. Statute requires that we report this to the state by, in June. So there has not been any dates. There would be staff, that would be staff in this location. We're just establishing a location so we can notify the state.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2A.
Who's the second?
Second.
Second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The second resolution is Resolution 524-2B, application to conduct gambling by Pineapple Pheasants Forever for a raffle at Lakeview Golf Course on July 13th.
I'll make a res, uh, I'll make a motion to support, or 2B.
Sorry, I'm too, you get it, I don't.
I couldn't get it all.
Hey, further discussion?
Did you have a second?
All in favor, say aye.
I didn't hear a second.
Aye.
Who's seconding it?
Oh, John. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution 524-2C.
I'm not trying this one.
Uh, exempt application to conduct gambling by Midnight Rider Snowmobile Club for a raffle at Corment Tri-Lakes Roadhouse, November 1st, 2024.
Motion to approve 2C.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The resolution 524-2G is the request from the taxpayer to repurchase property in Audubon Township.
Motion to approve 2G. I'll second.
Motion by Barry. Second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Current.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Denise. Human Services.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have two personnel requests and resolutions for your consideration today. The first is in public health. And I have Amanda Kumpala who's here to help answer any questions, if you have any for her. It's for a new full-time personnel request and I believe it's a coordinator, program coordinator is the exact title.
Questions of the board?
We, we talked quite extensively at our human services committee about this. And this really comes down to public health and it has to do with, with grant funding and we would receive grants to fund the position largely if we don't do it, we don't get the funding with the grant funding and we don't have a public health emergency coordinator. So we, we thought it made sense for us to have it. There's minimal cost above, above what the, the grants would cover. So.
Yeah, I agree with Erica. It made a lot of sense to do it.
And then we had talked about this a little bit of partnership for health. And then you go to argument, is it, the grant is guaranteed for five years? Is that correct?
At this time, the one grant is for four years and the other grant is for five years, but they would renew after that period of time. It's in legislation.
Yeah, it said ongoing, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 2H.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Richard. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Current.
The second resolution number 524-2I is for the adult services case aide, one of the case aides to go from part-time to full-time. We have an increase in caseload and need in that unit. And we were able to find that the case aide can add some responsibilities to their plate to help out the social workers and allow them to do their jobs. And we also identified the revenues for that position as well.
Yeah. And again, we, we did talk at length with, about this. And there, there is some targeted case management monies that the, the case aides can, by meeting with clients, that they can obtain. And I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Emma, that if we don't do this, we wouldn't be able to spend the $42,000 vulnerable adult grant that, that is allocated to Becker County. So we would have to give that back if we can't prove that we're spending it on adult protection. And if we would have this, we would be able to gain more grant money because we would be doing additional adult protection work, which is very important in our county. And we, we need to do well in that area. So again, we had a lot of discussion and we approved it. So I will make a motion to approve 2I.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Richard. To 2I. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Current.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Emma. Man, that's you.
Judy.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Hi, Judy. I am here to update you on the on-call for the IT department. What, what we have planned is that on-call is going to be done by two employees with me as the third person. The two employees are, I think, I would say excited to do it. We'd like to start actually on a Monday at seven, at eight in the morning, and it would run until the next Monday. And so they'd alternate each week. If either one of those employees is sick and can't do it, I, I'm the fallback. Cause I, as the department head, that's to me what made the most sense. We do it 365 days per year, and this is primarily for criminal justice. And we still get calls. Not, you know, it's not a flood of calls, but I'd say it's steady about two a month is the way I'd say it right now. Sometimes it's a little bit more, but when I look at the averaging of notes I took, and now we're doing, now we're doing tickets so we know when it happens. Any questions?
This is more just an update than-
Yep, an update.
-an update.
In fact, I think we will actually start tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Well, I just-
Yeah?
I, I, I think that this is a lot of money for us to spend for two calls a month.
I, I would agree. We don't have to do it. I'm fine with that.
So what, where are these two calls coming from? I know you said that they're criminal justice.
They might come from Clearwater. They come from tribal government. Some of them are, some of them come from Becker County Sheriff's Office. Not a lot from Audubon, not much from Frazee. I mean, we've gotten a couple. But that, it's, it's you, I, I would say that the majority of the calls are coming from tribal government. But they now have a coordinator there who is a lot, I mean, has taken on the responsibility to understand a lot more about it. So those have, have actually tailed off.
Is there, you said Clearwater and tribal government. Do they, do they help fund-
I have, I don't know anything about the funding. I would say no. They don't fund anything as far as I'm aware of.
So why, why is it our responsibility to-
I have no idea.
I think we can, I think we, we mentioned that early on in this process, that we should look at some cost reimbursements from other agencies if we go forward. But the, it is a lot of money. But the, the thing of this is, is that someone answers those calls when they're here. And it's Judy. And if we, if we tax our department head and have her on-call 24/7/365, it's not a very, it's not a very attractive job to retain people or to attract people. I mean, I, um-
I agree, Barry.
I don't, I think it's a lot of money. I don't know, I don't know a better solution, but we can't put this on Judy's head for eternity and let, and think that that's unacceptable. So I'm sorry, can't do it.
And a lot of people have, but things, times are changing. And I, I like having Judy around. She's doing her job. I do. And, and so I don't want to drive her out of here. And I don't want to-
I mean, I, I appreciate duty too. It's not that I don't appreciate duty. I just think that we, I don't think we have, yes, we need somebody to answer the, the calls. I just, we have two calls a month. That we're getting.
I know. I, I, I agree.
That's a lot of money for us to make sure we have somebody to-
You also have to remember the, the cost of a ransom or a, I mean, these, these aren't, these aren't insignificant protection items anymore.
But having, having somebody on-call isn't going to prevent a ransom or a-
It, it'll address it.
It will, it would address it quicker. Because our first, I mean, our first line of defense is always the employee and, and somebody noticing something that's unusual. And, you know, I, that really does help us.
I think our other option is not to have any, anyone answer that call after hours. I mean, we, you can't ask Judy to answer the calls. I mean, for, for the whole year. We, you can't. It's not reasonable and it's, and it shouldn't be. That's, that's my opinion.
I would like for us to understand why we are answering calls for other entities. I mean, if this was just Becker County, I would, I would feel more comfortable with it. But if we're answering, if we're now going to be paying on-call, which is how much a month?
I, I don't know by month. It's about $27,000 a year.
So a couple thousand dollars a month?
I guess I could have done the math.
For-
Only $4,000 if I put-
To answer calls for other, other entities.
Well, the issue, I think, Erica, is that we're all tied together. And if there's some complaint from another, say Hubbard County, it's probably on our end or something.
Hubbard County is not one of Clearwater. We don't do anything with Menomone. They would like to do it, but we have said that we're, when they asked about it a year ago, we said unless we're mandated to do it, we won't. I'm assuming we've been mandated to do this, but I really have no idea.
It goes back a long time.
Yeah. That's, I can find that we've been doing this for years.
We also have other, other agencies or other counties answering calls for us, or doing things for us. You know, Clay County and Case Works, you know, there's, so we're getting, you know, we are-
But we pay for that, right?
We pay for that, yes.
Belt Army County is one of the-
We pay for the program. We pay them for the program. Correct.
And I have no issue with looking at the tribe. Majority of the calls are coming from there. What's the reason and?
And if they're taking a down tick now too, that would help them. I mean, if-
Yeah. And again, that's the calls that we've had before. We were having, we had a lot of number of calls from, they were happening much more often from the sheriff's department because we had, we had a problem with one of the switches. So it dropped every third day. And so it really, until we fixed it, it happened and we reacted every single time it happened. So I'm just telling you what's happened in the last two months. Previous, I think it was all last summer. It was very, very often for their switch to fail. We finally got, we thought we had the solution. It made it last about 10 days. And then we finally got the final, well, that's a bad term. We finally got a better solution and that hasn't happened since, I believe, September. But we, we want to, what we, I think what the reason we're on-call is to protect the people that protect us. So for me, that's, that's why I, I've been doing it. It's not for any other reason, but to me, how do we let people not have the tools they're expecting to have when they pull over that car? You know, that, maybe that's somebody from, you know, who knows where, that there is truly a warrant out for their arrest. And when they walk up, if they don't know that, I, I, I don't want to be the reason that there's a problem. You know, I, I don't, I don't want that to happen. So for me, that's why I've been answering the phone since I really started. Now, could we have somebody else answer it? Yeah, but they're just going to have to call me anyway. Because somebody has to be able to do something here sometimes. So for me, if, if we don't want to spend the money, I, I guess I hear that. It just seems, um, just seems a, a tough, a tough decision. And you guys make the tough decisions. So whatever you guys want to do, I'm happy with.
I don't see where we have a choice.
Well, what, what, what has been done for the last-
Well, Judy's been answering the phone. We'll go back to that one more time. Judy's been answering the phone.
I meant previous to Judy.
I know it. But if, if law enforcement needs this, I, I, I don't know. I, I agree with you. It's expensive.
Mm-hmm.
But what, you, you'd have to come up with a different, then I don't see any other way around this. But if you can come up with something better, I, I'd love to hear it. But I, I agree, it's expensive. But-
I think we, we tried to think of other ways and at, at courthouse committee too. And I just, I just don't, we just don't.
I think we've already approved that this is just an update on how it's going to take place.
Yeah, we approved the on-call policy. I don't think we approved, I think what we, when we talked about the last meeting, more information was going to be brought forward about the need for when to start it. And at that time, there was four calls a month. Now we're down to two calls a month. And it seems like, I don't know, I, it's, I just, I don't know what the answer is. But-
Well, we can always, if we go, as we move forward with this and things change and something pops up that we can handle it better, we can certainly change our, change how we're going to address it.
Well, and I think if, if this moves forward, we need better documentation of who, how many, what the calls are, so that we, so that we can, we can address it.
And you're making all tickets now, you said, right, to track that data?
Yep.
We can revisit it in six months and just see how-
I, yeah, I think we approve, at least push forward and revisit it at the end of the year and-
And I think we should also investigate on where the calls are coming from, like you said. And can we be compensated from other agencies that-
I mean, if we're responsible to answer calls to other agencies, then I think they need to share in the expense of having on-call so that we are there for not just Becker County Sheriff's Department, but Clearwater, White Earth, tribal, police. Well, like, if they, if they want that phone call answered, well, then they, they need to pay for it too.
Do you, who should I work with to, to start that ball rolling?
I don't know. Carrie.
I, I was gonna say, it's probably me and probably the sheriff's department. They probably have some of the background on this, I'm assuming.
Well, it goes back a long, long time that everything was tied together and support tribal police and other entities and-
And that might go back quite some time and we may, we obviously don't know the history.
Detroit likes PD. In the same, in the same manner, we support
And how, how-
Lots of different places.
Can, can you explain like how do we support them? Like, is it through the VPN? Is it through-
The way, the way the, there's information that the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, Apprehension has. We support them by, we're the conduit for a, a group of counties and police departments to be that conduit. I, I imagine that there are other places where the cities are bigger that they have their own conduit. We are the conduit for kind of this area. And why that is, I, I wish I knew Erica, but I really don't. I've never even really looked into it because it was just, they, they're on, they're on our, they're on our network. So we've supplied them with the VPN access they needed. We've supplied them with the support that they need to be successful.
And we're not sure if they pay for it. It's just, this is-
I, I've never, I don't see anything in any, I've never, I've never seen-
It's not in the budget or-
I, I've never seen that's attached to a budget item at all. So I don't think we're paid for it. But I've got to be honest, it could be someplace else. Why, why would it go to IT? I don't, I don't know.
I think you need IT and Sheriff and-
I think, yeah, we need to look at that.
Look at the whole system and-
I would like to move forward though with the-
Yes.
Yeah.
With the, and if, and if we need a motion for it, I would, I would entertain a motion to, to continue or to move forward on the on-call, on-call pay for IT and-
Starting tomorrow?
Starting as, starting tomorrow.
Soon as tomorrow.
I'll make that a motion too.
I'll second that.
What kind of motion is second?
I would, I would like to, to add to the motion if possible for us to revisit it in six months.
Sure.
Just to revisit-
I, I think we can revisit. I don't think it, I'm not going to okay it to be part of the motion, but I think we just do that. I mean, just, I think, because it can be lost in motion. But I just think at the end of the year, we revisit and to, to review the expenses and if we've, and if we've looked at any billing opportunities.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? Hearing that and all in favor, say aye.
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 Polls?
Thanks Judy.
Thank you.
Jim.
We're going to be on time.
Doesn't happen very often. Doesn't be on time.
Close. Jim doesn't talk to much.
Morning Jim.
Morning Jim.
I have a revised resolution.
Yeah, I already have the purchase agreement, Jim. Here, I can give it to you. You have it. Thanks Jim.
Thank you.
No.
One amp to the break.
Well, it's after this.
Is it?
Yep, it is. We're on time too.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Don't rush it.
Well, before you, today from Highway, we have a resolution approving a purchase agreement or authorizing purchase of property for Heartland Trail, acquisition of approximately 5.2 acres around the wetland area so we can avoid impacts to the wetland. Initially, we had been working through this for quite some time and in the end here, the owner decided that instead of an easement, he would prefer that the county outright purchase the property. Nothing has changed with regards to the price on that. It's the same as we had offered and he accepted. So we are planning to close, actually next week now, it was this week, but the agreement was drafted by Charlie Ramstead, who was representing us. And that transaction of the contract for deed and the property is, is occurring all at once. So At Ease LLC will be the new owner of the property and they are conveying or selling, or we are purchasing then 5.2 acres around that wetland area from At Ease Dock.
Thanks Jim. This has been a work process for two years, I think, just to negotiate on this little piece of property. So I guess it's good to see it come to resolution.
This is certainly the best, for the trail, this is the best way to go about it.
Could have went up on the highway, but that involved a lot of probably lands, a lot of additional work too, so.
Then you got wetland mitigation expenses, which would be, you know, over half of what we're paying for this, so.
This is J. Abinko motion, approve resolution to L.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion?
And then just to add one thing, not to the motion, but the DNR eventually will purchase this property from us. It may be not at that cost, but they will.
They'll do their own appraisal.
They'll do their own appraisal, yes.
So we'll get reimbursed or something.
Something like that.
Any other discussion? Hearing that and all in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing that.
Great.
Thanks Jim. This was a long-
Thanks, thanks Jim.
This was a long one.
Where we're supposed to be.
Yep. We're right on time, 10:10.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
We've got a layout that the ground rules are supposed to be doing here.
Yes.
State your name too for those online.
Yes, you bet. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. My name's Liza Donaball with DDA Human Resources. I am here to walk you through the next step of selecting your next county administrator. As you know, I was here quite a few months ago and did the information gathering. We started our advertising. And in our advertising, just, I know that you have this information in your hands, but we had 25 applicants. Of those applicants, they carefully screened them just to make sure that they met minimum qualifications, touched on some of those desired attributes that you all and your department director shared with me, as well as maybe had some evidence of touching on some of the projects you've got coming. And also if they had local ties, that kind of gives a little bit, a few extra points for them moving in. I was asked by the county to score on using veterans preference, so I did do that. And those are, that, I pushed through those semifinalists who scored the highest in all of those areas.
So we don't reference veterans' points now in, in our, in this level that we're looking at?
Not necess, not necess, well, I'd have to lean on your HR for that, but I did my part of the process where I pushed for those, you do, the candidates, they did identify themselves as a veteran and then forwarded their paperwork to prove that. So you do have that in your file.
Right, but I'm just, on our scoring thing, it showed to the points. I'm just wondering, do those points count on ours? Do you want us to add those in on our scoring?
I think so.
Now?
Typically, we use that for-
Prior?
For the application.
So it should not have been included in our point system?
Correct, yep. Just to see who is eligible for an interview.
Potential interview? Okay.
So who's eligible for an interview? So we should have used them in this.
They were used in, in this realm.
In my pre-screening, yes.
Okay.
And then those semifinalists were able to complete video interviews. So you had access to those. And then the work personality index and then the information disclosure. All right. And then, so I pushed forward 11 candidates. Three did withdraw for various reasons, leaving eight for you to consider today. And I guess just to provide those ground rules, we're going to have three business items we're going to talk about. First, we're going to select our candidates. Then we'll talk about our interview schedule, what you want your interview schedule to look like. And then we'll talk about whether you feel a travel reimbursement is appropriate for those candidates traveling to, to meet with you face to face. When selecting your finalists today, we just want to make sure that we protect their private, non-public information. So I try to, to, to run this process without really having to go into those conversations, but if there is room for discussion, I just want to remind you not to use their names, where they're currently living, working, even where they formally were, were working or living, because that could potentially identify their, their, their identity. When we move into this, I will pass out a ballot to the five commissioners. I'll ask you to write down the top three that you're interested in meeting face to face. And then I'll bring those ballots together.
Three or four?
Three. And let's leave your four on there. In the event that we can't seem to get the numbers to work out, then I'll go back and I'll ask for your fourth candidate.
I know, I had four already.
Yes. Boom.
Why don't, why don't we put down four? Because that's what we were asked to do.
Sounds good.
And then if there's a, a big gap in, in the numbers, then, I mean, if they're all the same, then we look at four. If they're, if the fourth one, if there's four, number fours and they're speckled,
Yep.
then we can look at three.
I like that description, speckled.
Speckled.
Yep. All right. Does anybody have any questions though before I pass out the ballot?
You want us to write names or numbers?
Numbers. Just the number that was assigned to the candidates. Helps ensure that their identity is kept close to chest.
Jeez, look at that spreadsheet you got.
I know.
Here's my spreadsheet.
I did my job. Thank you.
We don't have any cameras on can see my spreadsheet here, can, do we?
So we'll put number four off to the side?
Just, or below it.
Or below it.
But I'd have to write really small.
It's just numbers.
You just-
You're right.
Just our high four.
Yes.
Do you want them in any particular order or just, or do you want them one, two, three, four, or do you want them?
Um, well, you can, but when I give points, each vote will receive one point. So they will all-
They in no particular order. Okay.
Do we have someone- Do we have someone to collect ballots? Don't sign your name.
I'm all nervous that I didn't use the right number now.
I think I did.
You want me to?
I better, don't, don't. I got the right numbers.
Just a little abbreviation.
Okay, yep, that's the right, that's the right order.
Where did you, let me see that. Can I see it?
It's, it's just, um.
No, I just wanna see who the number.
They're just little name.
Okay, I got the right number. I mean, I could've looked up on the thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I've shuffled the ballots, so in no particular order. Our first ballot, I have a vote for candidate number two. Number four, candidate number four. Candidate number five and candidate number six. So that's two, four, five and six. Next ballot, I have a vote for candidate number two. Candidate number four. Candidate number five. Candidate number six, that's two, four, five and six. Next ballot, I have a vote for candidate number two. Number six. Number five.
Oh, not in order, come on.
And number three. So that's two, six, five and three.
Two, three, five, six.
Next ballot, I have a vote for candidate number three. Candidate number two. Candidate number five. And candidate number six, so that's three, two, five and six. And last ballot, I have a vote for candidate number two. Candidate number three. Candidate number five. And candidate number six, that's two, three, five and six.
Oh my gosh, are we that close? Look at that.
That is pretty amazing. All right, so candidate number one, zero votes. Candidate number two, five votes. Candidate number three, three votes. Number four, two votes. Candidate number five, five votes, and candidate number six, five votes. So candidates number two, five and six have a unanimous vote. Obviously, they would be extended an invitation for a final interview if that's the wish of the council. And this is where then the conversation can enter. Is the council, or the board happy with three finalists? And I just always issue this word of caution that I would say 75 to 80% of the time, a finalist will back out before they get to final interview time, and that can be for various reasons, whether they received an offer somewhere else, or ever after going home and thinking on it, they just have a change of heart. If one were to withdraw from the process, is the board happy with interviewing two? If you are content with the three, we would move forward there. Or does the board wanna entertain inviting candidate number three or candidate number four as in addition to, or even as a backup if one were to withdraw?
I would, I would say, my recommendation would go with the three. If one drops out, go to the next one in line.
Yep.
If the next one drops out.
Which would be three.
Go to the next one.
That would be, I would concur.
But I also wanna stress too, though, that, I mean, if we don't, if it doesn't feel right, then we don't do it. I mean.
Yes.
I, I mean, well, just to, I, just not to rush, just not to rush, just to fill the position. I think we need to, and I think, you know, it's quite possible we have a candidate out of this. But, I mean, don't, don't feel that this is an absolute. These, if it doesn't feel right, and we can ask for our second interviews, or add one, or, or, you know. So there's lots of, there's lots of options, so. But I think this is a good, I think this is a good pool and.
Yeah, I think we'll have to do second interviews with some, I'm sure do that.
Okay, so my understanding is to extend an invitation to candidates number two, five and six. If one were to withdraw, then to extend an invitation to candidate number three.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful. Do you wanna talk about interview day? Do you want to stop and take formal action? I just wanna, how would you like to proceed?
Formal action, what?
Formal.
Like make a motion?
Yes, and I've seen it done both ways, where it's done at the end of all the business items, or if you feel comfortable doing that now before we talk about interview day.
I don't understand what you're asking for a motion.
A motion to approve the three candidates for interview.
Yes, with a backup.
I'll make a motion to approve those three.
What should we hear it for?
With the three as, or with the one as a backup?
Yep. I'll second that. Second my name. Further discussion? Hearing on all in purpose, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, wonderful. All right, the interview day, in your memo that I shared with you, I did have a few examples in there for you to consider on what you would, how you would like to spend time with your finalists, if you would like others to be involved in that day as well. So some of those ideas include a county or a facility tour, coffee with your leadership staff, staff meet and greet event, which would be informal. The formal panel, panel interview with you as the full board. And even possibly considering a, a formal panel interview with your leadership staff. So those are just a few ideas. I'm open to yours.
I would like to ask our department heads what, how they wanna proceed with.
Yeah, I'll just say, years ago, we did candidates, 'cause I was in charge of getting them to view highway and going through that, that they went around and toured each of the big departments and got a feel of what's out there.
But I would like to hear, personally, in my opinion, I would like to hear, have, have the department heads meet individually, or not, as a group, with the candidates also. And maybe have time to ask a couple of questions, and I would like the feedback from our department. They're the ones that are gonna have to, I, I would like their input on it.
I was asked also if, if we had ever considered, and I've never been a part of this, so I don't know, if we've ever considered having a public, um, it, not, I don't know if you would call it an interview, but like a public panel where we would have people of the community asking questions. Is that something that's ever been done?
Yep, I've seen it done, handled in a couple of different ways. More of an informal process where it's a meet and greet, and you have the candidates in the room, and you have those members of the public. Or maybe you invite specific stakeholders throughout your community to come in and have more of an informal back and forth conversation. I invite feedback. I have a worksheet there where it asks four very specific questions, of which then I share with you all after your final interview. I've also seen it on a more formalized process where, yes, if you have specifics stakeholders in your community you want involved, they would have their time, you know, give it 20, 25, 30 minutes, where they too have scripted questions where they're able to ask, and then they would also provide the same feedback. Your department directors, if they do a formal process, or even if it's an informal process, same questions. They'll be asked the same questions, of which then I relate to this board after your formal, your final interview.
I guess I've seen some, like the informal meet and greet, that the candidates are here and the public can come in and.
Mm-hmm.
Seem to work well in some situations.
It does allow you as the board to come in and kind of observe some of those interactions, so it allows you more face-to-face time with those candidates. So in some, certain situations, I see that it works. And the more work that the county can do on the front end of really extending some personal invitations to specific stakeholders to be there so that your candidates aren't standing in the room and waiting for one or two people to come in, so. But I'm open to how you want to craft your day.
Your call.
Do we?
Yeah, I, I would think, I like the kind of informal meet and greet because, right now, we have a city administrator in the room now that extend the invitations to all our city administrators to come in and get there and partner and visit with them and. Agreed. Public, whoever wants to come. Just kinda.
We can set a time for that.
All right, and if we do that, what time do you feel would be best to do that? Just so then we use that as an anchor spot as part of the day. You as a board, you can anticipate you'll spend 45 minutes with each of the finalists. Usually a lot for a five-minute stand-up stretch-your-legs break. I generally hold your portion at the end of all the activities. That way, then we have time to get those, those feedback forms back to me so that I can share it with you. So I, I think in, with that in mind, do you think a noon hour or an early morning coffee with candidates?
Is that working? I think early morning.
Yeah.
Would be best if we wanna get public input right away. Or noon hour, either one.
Well, it's, just so we extend the invitation to all the cities and their. So would, would the noon hour be better for the public to, to have a meet and greet and then have maybe the department heads meet with them in the morning and then meet with them after the meet and greet? Does that work? Is that a good schedule, or?
I would like, are we, are we thinking more formalized with department heads? Where there's more, you know, like with the public, it's more a meet and greet, informal. Department heads, it's more formal, asking questions, or?
As I said in the past, it went around and met with the department, department head.
Mm-hmm.
I would like maybe.
More one-to-one.
I would like them all in the same room and just maybe ask just a couple of questions, you know, just not.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, it's easy to.
That's what I was thinking.
Just, you know, just ask what's your, how, how is, how would you work with department heads on this? And how would you, you know, they could have just a couple of questions and they can get a, maybe get a sense of the.
Oh, that's fine, and then they still have.
It wouldn't take.
Too thorough for so many.
Yep.
Wouldn't take too much time.
Well, and the wonderful thing about the public meet and greet, that's still an opportunity for your staff and your department directors to come in and have more of that informal conversation and then still have that formalized process where we have a script of questions. They're asked the same questions, this, each of the finalists are asked the same questions in the same way. Really kind of, yeah, just keeps everything more standardized. And I'm more in favor of more standardized, I think it protects the county.
We're gonna meet with each, each candidate by themselves, or, you know, not with other, other ones. So was that, is that a time when opposite of them being with us, could they meet with the department heads in a different room?
Yes, yes, we can do that too.
That, so maybe.
So that they're on their own either, also?
Yeah, so the department heads are, let's say they're up in the jury.
Well, they'd take, I mean, I would imagine Amanda could be with them, or maybe to bring them and.
Yeah. No, but then, 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 then we could have the formal stuff after the meet and greet.
Whatever works.
Yeah, yeah, it's your, yeah, whatever.
So public meet and greet, informal form, where staff and department heads can also come to the meet and greet with the public, and then after a more formalized, um, with department heads, and then after that.
Well, they, at the same time, as we're interviewing one candidate, the other one, ones.
With department heads.
Yeah. The other one, and then one will be in, awaited. Or maybe one can then get toured to the court, I don't know, something.
All right, and I can work with staff on finalizing the details, but at least now I know it. So if you can verify in your schedule that you have the afternoon of.
The 11th.
Mm-hmm. Reserved.
Amanda and Peggy can kind of coordinate the scheduling.
Yes.
I don't really like that. I have nothing.
All right, wonderful. All right, thank you for the direction on that. And then lastly, just to discuss whether you as a board feel a travel reimbursement is appropriate to offer to these finalists. So your three finalists, the furthest, is traveling 275 miles from here. I think you as a board just have to, you know, answer yes or no, and I've seen it handled multiple different ways. If it, if you don't wanna offer, then that's the answer. If you do feel that it's appropriate to offer, then we can talk about different options, which include, you know, federal mileage, reimbursement rate, maybe a night in a hotel that you, we have arranged through working with staff. A stipend, I've seen a stipend that's offered, so those are the different options.
What have you guys done before? Yeah, we, we did, uh.
We have given.
When Jack was hired.
Given some mileage, I can't remember what amounts, but we've given either a stipend or something. So we, we, in the past, have given some allotment for travel. I don't recall how much.
I, I don't. I think Jack was a little more because he had a, a organ or whatever.
What's the, what's the, what's the norm? No norm?
I was hoping this, yes, that I could just say, no, they all, it's handled completely different. Yes, it's whatever you feel most comfortable with, or what precedence has been set, or even sometimes what's in your policy. Currently working with the county now, they didn't offer anything. And then there's others where, just out of simplicity, if you have a relationship with a local hotel, that sometimes that's just the easiest. That allows then the candidate to come up the night before, spend time in your community, not only touring, but also talking to stakeholders or community members before they meet, start all the face-to-face interactions the next day.
I'd support mileage, to just, if we just do mileage, would that be reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
And if they wanna stay the night, they can.
Yeah.
At the IRS rate.
IRS rate. We can probably schedule them a little later in the, say, morning to start, or.
I think the plan is to start it, well, if we're, if we're gonna do that, maybe we start at the noon hour.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And generally, those that are traveling the furthest, I schedule them earlier in the day so that they can get hopefully on the road and have a good.
I'll support, I'll support mileage.
I would too.
I would too.
I would also, yeah. Current IRS rate.
We're gonna do a motion for that?
Six, seven.
Um.
Wait. Points. That's what it is.
Consensus that we'll pay, or do you wanna motion?
I think consensus is fine.
Note it in the minutes that the board approves. The knowledge is mileage expense for the candidates.
Wonderful. All right, I will continue to provide weekly updates. So after this point, the finalists, this is when we get started on their backgroundings process. I'll have them, when I get back to my office, have them sign release and acknowledgement forms that allows us to start digging into their backgrounds. So we'll do a credit history, driving history, criminal history, verify their education. And then this is where I get to have some really great in-depth conversations with current and former supervisors. So those are generally 30 to 45-minute conversations where I ask everything about their work role and responsibilities, initiatives, their leadership style, how do they deal with conflict, how do they lead through conflict, strengths and weaknesses. And I find that those descriptions are really enlightening. The feedback I've received is once you are here and ready for your face-to-face interviews, you have a pretty good feel for who those candidates are. After I get also back to my office, I'll draft a press release that will share the identities, the, the names and the backgrounds of each of these finalists. I'll forward that on to staff, and then staff can share that as, as the county wishes. So, are you there?
Just, just curious, I'm on your education, and I, and I'm not questioning the candidate's education at all, or any of it. But there, I mean, I, I'm a crime show watcher, and, and I've seen it, I mean, I've seen it, and I'm very much aware, I have a, there's a personal experience of an entity that we do business with that had someone falsify education. And it wasn't, I mean, the company that, or the, that we were on, where we were, that I'm involved in, caught it. And they had, had been employed in other agencies for years and hadn't, and did not have the accredited that they claimed they had. So I mean, it's very, it's, I mean, you have to, you have to be digging, make sure you have, I mean, I, again, I'm not, I don't doubt our, our candidates are, I'm sure have everything they say, but it happens. I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of that it hasn't happened, so.
Yep, we've had a rare circumstance where the candidate represented the education different. And so, yes, and upon verification. And upon verification, we, we found that it wasn't as it was presented in the resume, and having a conversation with the finalists to indicate. I do believe that in that situation, it was, they just, they did not realize that how it was presented was not how it actually was, so. But if we do find that there's conflicting information, we bring that to your attention. We also ask the candidate to provide a personal statement indicating why they made the mistake, what maybe they learned from the mistake. So all of that information is shared as part of that background, and so you have that as part of your decision-making process.
Do you search social media, do you?
We do not, um, no, we do not use that as part of that process, no. But that's why we talk to current and former supervisors, because we like to hear more of a well-rounded story as to, you know, what they brought to that organization, and why they left the organization, and why they're interested in, in coming here. So we find there's a lot of information that comes out of that process. We also ask our candidates, as you saw, to respond to the information disclosure question. So if there's anything potentially in there that could cause some concern, we ask that they air that right out front. All right.
Anything else?
Nothing from me, but thank you so much for doing your homework. I know it's a lot of information, and you have a lot more coming, so I'll ask the same thing of you one way, one week before that final interview. Please reserve about 45 minutes per finalist to review the background information.
I will have to say, the candidates, the, the point system, I mean, everyone's points here were different, I'm sure, but how we pointed them, there was, they were so, I mean, they were very close. I mean, I, it's, it's hard to, hard to pull, um, pull things out that, that make someone stand out more than another. And, uh, so it was very difficult to, to, for, you know, education, and it's like, every, you know, and, 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 it was just very hard to get, get a lot of separation, because there wasn't. In mine, there was not a lot of separation from top to bottom.
No, I went back and reviewed it several, and probably changed a point one, where the other here or there, and, uh, so I probably missed something, and-
Yeah, that's-
But it's good to see that we all agreed on-
Three of them.
Three of them, so I think that's-
Mm-hmm.
That says something.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we are just a united board, aren't we?
It's gotten better, so.
All right, wonderful.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Keep in touch, and-
Yeah, thank you.
Invitation still stands. Each time you get one of my emails, if you have any questions, reach out to me directly, and I'll answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, or not, we'll adjourn, and our workshop is up in the third floor meeting room.
Yep. Correct. I brought a piece of gum for it too, so you don't have to-
Pardon?